The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Said notice was properly given to the Curry, transmitted to the Curry News and the Star Ledger on December 27, 2013, as well as posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. Oh, I'm sorry, he's not here. Mr. Clark. I have to hold off for a second for the clerk.
He's on four mile. Turn left onto Richmond Street.
You're here. Okay, I already read the notice requirements. Mr. Clark, can I have a roll call, please?
Council members Brown.
Here.
Council Lou Greaves.
Here.
Councilman Storch.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Chairman Reed.
Here.
And Council President Rivers.
Here.
We have all members ready to call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we are at public comment segment of the meeting. Mr. Clark?
Pursuant to Article 2, Section 2, Colon, 2 dash 10A of the Administrative Code of the City of Plainfield, 1971, special meeting is hereby called by the Plainfield City Council on Monday, December 30, 2013, at 7:00 PM in City Hall Library, 515 Washington Avenue, State of Plainfield, for the purpose of considering and acting upon the following: possible selection of candidates to fill the third ward city council vacancy as a result of resignation of Mayor-elect Adrian O'Mat, mayoral appointments to the African Caribbean Commission, and mayoral appointments to the Plainfield Community Emergency Response Team. Be further advised that the council will convene in closed session at 6:00 PM prior to the special meeting for the purpose of discussing personal matters. Formal action may be taken, and this was dated December 27, 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Now we're at the public comment segment of this meeting on resolutions only. The floor is now open for resolutions only. Can I have a motion? Resolutions only.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year. Allen Goldstein, 939 Madison Avenue. I guess it was a month or so ago, maybe two months already, I sent everybody on the city council some information pertaining to the Community Emergency Response Team. And I think one of the things that I've been looking for for so many years is for the city to be doing, taking on some of these programs and doing the right thing with the programs. And that's what's kind of caused it to happen. Everything that I've been able to read about this community emergency response team suggests that it is a program that's run frequently through public safety, with the emergency management coordinators, and it's in a way that people can get training who volunteer in their neighborhoods or in businesses to, you know, learn some of the techniques and fill in some of the gaps during an emergency. Nothing that I can find points to, you know, a group of mayoral appointees. And I think we're really heading down the wrong track as far as what this response team is going to have. But I hope you reconsider it. I think in a couple of days, maybe you'll have an opportunity for the new mayor, Public Safety Director, Emergency Management Director, to sit down and discuss, you know, the best way to bring this into the community. But to have this all tied up into a little group that's appointed by the mayor just does not seem like the right way to go. So I would hope you reconsider that and move on to, you know, a better future for the city and do things, you know, in a way that is going to be most effective. And I don't think the way it's spelled out here is a very effective way to handle the search program. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to postpone the comments?
No.
Is that all those in favor? Any opposed, an extension motion passed. I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Good evening, everyone. It's such a pleasure to see as many people here, and I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful 2014. I'll start with Resolution R. 413-13, councilmatic resolution authorizing the appointment of a candidate to fill the third ward city council vacancy caused as a result of the resignation of Mayor-elect Adrian O'Mat. And his nominations at this moment, and we have, what, three candidates? And we can take them in any order. Does anyone have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Veronica Taylor.
Veronica Taylor.
I second.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
It's a no call for the nomination of Veronica Taylor, which was seconded by Council Storch. Councilmember Brown?
No.
Greaves?
No.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
No.
Council President Rivers?
No.
Motion passed.
May I have a second nomination, please?
I nominate Veronica Taylor.
Who?
Gloria Taylor.
We have the nomination of Gloria Taylor on the floor.
Who seconded?
Storch. Curry seconded.
Councilwoman Storch, did you second?
I was joking. I mean, I was.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
This is the motion for Gloria Taylor, seconded by Councilman Storch. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Greaves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Let me, let Ms. Taylor will be, congratulations. All right, I call up Resolution R. 414-13, granting advice and consent of appointments to the Plainfield African Caribbean Commission. And let's see. What we have here?
Second with a comment.
Second with a comment, please.
Yeah. With regard to a comment that was made during public comments by Mr. Goldstein regarding the search team, I would say the same thing should hold for the African Caribbean Commission. We have a process for commission appointments whereby candidates submit their resumes and information through the city clerk's office, and it's an open process where people in the community have the opportunity to know about the commission and to call for folks who are interested, the same with the Cultural and Heritage Commission, et cetera. So I would ask for this not to be voted on, frankly, to be tabled, because in a couple of days, we're going to be having an inauguration and this week of service that council, that Mayor-elect Matt has put forth, and in that, there will be an opportunity for residents from all over the city to put themselves forth to serve on different boards and commissions. So.
Is that a motion you're putting on the table?
On the table.
What was that again?
The table.
Do we have a second on that motion? Here, no second, I guess it fails. May I read the names of the appointments?
Before you do, Councilman Reed, I also have a number of others.
Go ahead.
I was not in favor of this commission before, but I applaud the group's meeting, and I think it's, I think the original, or they still are, committee, and I think that the work they're doing, you know, is great. I think it's helped the city. But I objected to this being a commission, because a commission is different than, there's a lot of groups that need in the city, and they, you know, they have their own goals and objectives, and that's great. But a commission is actually, it's a formal body of the city that's created by the council. And we have a Hispanic commission that nobody has taken seriously. We haven't filled it. So I think doing, especially doing this when that other commission is pretty much defunct, and then doing it at the, we're not even talking 11th hour, we're talking 11th hour and 59 minutes, with one more day left of the mayor's term. So I just don't, I don't think this is a serious gesture towards the people that obviously want representation and want to celebrate their culture. I just think it's, it just strikes me as being political. And I think, I think we should, I mean, I didn't vote the table, because I'm just going to vote no, but and no disrespect to any of the people who stood here, I hope they continue to meet, whether it's a commission or a committee, and that they inform us of what they're doing. I think it's great. I just don't see this as a commission, and I don't see it as a serious gesture on the part of the council to appoint these positions at this late hour.
Thank you. Okay, I will, I guess it's correct schedule. Charles Hugo Eki, this is a partner for three-year term ending 12/31/2016. Cliff Simon. Is that correct, man?
Yes.
Cliff, would you, I want you guys to stand up so we can see who you are for a second.
Cliff is not here today.
Philip.
Amici.
Amici, this is a three-year appointment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Marion. Co.
Fona.
Fona. Two-year partner.
She has to work, she left for work.
Okay. Richard Sima. Two-year. Oliver.
Quanta.
Quanta for two-year. And I can even announce this. Diablo.
Olabisi Sanya.
Olabisi Sanya. That's a one-year term. Okay. Okay, Louis.
Ibeyiwe. Ibeyiwe.
Abeckway.
Yes.
One-year term. Again, everyone?
Yes.
Good. May I have a vote, please? Call for the vote.
Second by Councilman Storch. Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Greaves?
Yes.
Storch?
No.
Williams?
No.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Do please correct the dates, because the last two are wrong. What was that again?
The last two dates are wrong.
It should be 2014. One year, 2014. I said one-year term. Okay. Next resolution, and we'll be going home, Resolution 415-13, granting advice and commit to the appointment of the Community Emergency Response Team. And I think we may have some names on that as well, if you want to give them.
Yes. May I, I'm taking my.
Actually, Mr. Clark, you do not have to, because it is an unpaid position, therefore you are about to enroll in a school.
All right, all the emergency, Community Emergency Response Team, we have William Anger, Vera Greaves, Mr. Peter Briggs Jr., Nava Greaves, Marie Pasas, Esther Duz, Daniela Coffey, and Benya Bay. That's it. And they are parted for three, 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 and a, just the last one here. All three-year terms. We had a second on that, didn't we?
No, we didn't.
Okay, may I have a second on the R. 415-13, appointing the Emergency Response Team?
Second.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
A comment?
Yes. This is an important group, it's about public safety, we should take it seriously. We should not be appointing, we should not be consenting to appointments made at the very end of an outgoing mayor's term. This is something, these names should be handed over to the incoming mayor, who should not do this by himself, should actually put this team together with the help of the incoming Public Safety Director and Police Director, or anybody else that they see fit, who's knowledgeable about public safety in Plainfield. That would be the serious way to do this. So I'm going to vote no. I hope you don't want to.
Okay, we're discussing a resolution, and I somewhat disagree with you as it relates, these people is volunteering at times, there's no money here, and hopefully they do a very good job, and hopefully they don't have to work them, because emergencies. May I have a vote?
I just said something.
Yeah.
At one of the, one of the last meetings, Mayor-elect Matt shared that you did not have a problem with the names that was on this.
This is exactly what he said.
Yeah, well, I don't agree with Mayor Matt on that case.
Well, Mayor Matt is going to have a lot of work to do for us.
I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this one.
Roll call on Resolution R. 415-13, seconded by Councilwoman Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Greaves?
Abstain.
Storch?
No.
Williams?
No.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Is there any in favor to oppose for extension? Resolution passed. Okay?
And now we'll have a chance to do something about it.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Now we're at the public comment segment of this meeting. Citizens are welcome to come to the mic and speak your name, address, and their concerns. The floor is now open.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Latony Taylor. I reside at 75 West First Street. I have a prepared statement for you, Mr. Matt. I would ask you, would you please tell me why you would like to begin your tenure being somewhat vindicative? You have a public defender who has worked diligently for the city of Plainfield for 12 years. She has performed this job with the defendants being treated with the utmost respect and dignity. And for no apparent reason can you give us than the fact that it's somewhat political that you want to dismiss her.
You have to address this.
I'm sorry. The council as well, that she is going to be dismissed from a position that she has done professionally, diligently, and to the best of her ability for 12 years. This council has been informed that there is a personal crisis. Personal crisis. That is something serious, and should be taken seriously. I can speak from experience, last year, I got very sore. I worked for a company that let me go once I was sick. In the middle of life sustaining treatment, we're not going to allow you to do this. This is a time before someone takes office, that you ask yourself, what kind of person do I want to be considered as? Do you want to be considered the person who has the particular fortitude to not allow politics to dictate someone's destiny? I hope so. We're trying to be polite. We're trying not to disrupt your names, but we're not going to go away. We will be back. We will be here. Every opportunity, because Joyce Briggs Leatherly deserves to keep her position for personal reasons. I thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Jada Christian for 210 Evergreen Avenue, Plainfield. I have, actually, the woman who's here, I, I, one of the things that she said was she may mention politics and undone. And I think we've all seen here that, that politics plays a major role of this council. And it's clear now, it should look clear in the future. So I think it would be nice if politics wasn't here. It is. You will be hearing probably some more about that from me, but aside, the reason why I'm here, so, I'm being a woman. The reason why I'm here is, I believe that Mayor Matt had said that, or future Mayor Matt, said that he would have a cabinet in place before he takes office. So I believe that there were some names mentioned, there are other positions that have not been mentioned, or I have heard about it. So I would just like to know from the council, where, where are we on some of the other positions that have not been named, and have you interviewed, have they been brought to you? Where, where are we in terms of having a full component of people on January 1st, which is, you know, coming up day after tomorrow? And, and, I have a few questions, so, like, and, and if we are, if we don't have any people in place, if you could just tell myself and everyone here, why not, you know, what's going on? Just, just give us a status report. What's going on? What's happening?
Ms. Christian, I'll speak on behalf of the council. Janette, good to see you. Various positions have been put forward to the council on behalf of Mayor-elect Matt. Some have received consensus to move forward to the reorganization meeting, others have not, and I can't give you any more specifics on why certain names have moved forward, have not, and part of the closed session, but I can tell you that nominations have come for most, if not all, positions, and the ones that have received consent to move forward will be on the reorg meeting on January 6th.
The floor is still open?
Seeing none, I'm thirsty.
Thank you. Good evening, happy Quanza, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And Happy Hanukkah.
Hanukkah? Yes, that too. Season greetings. I'm here on a personal note. I want to thank the council for.
I'm sorry, your name and answer?
I'm sorry, Lola Campbell, 1404 Plainfield, New Jersey, 1404 Highland Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm very, very emotional about this. This is a matter that is very near and dear to me. My sister, who was one of the previous speakers addressed, Joyce Briggs, is the public defender, has been the public defender for the past 12 years for the city of Plainfield. She's one of the few, or maybe the only, Plainfield resident who was removed from the proposed legal staff for the mayor-elect. I had the opportunity at the Quanza program to speak to the mayor-elect and appeal to him on a personal level, okay? I personally have worked, if you talk about political maneuvering and all of that, I personally worked in his previous campaigns. In fact, felt like I was one of the key people who resurrected his political future about five, six years ago. Putting that to the side, I approached Mr. Matt and was appealing to him about my sister's very critical condition. And for those of you who are not aware of the circumstances, without going into the details, she does have medical coverage from the city, because she was grandfathered in, having worked for the city 12 years ago, to have medical coverage. Everyone knows how horrible this health care issue is right now, as far as having to change your health coverage, having to buy new health coverage, it's a disaster. She has a very, very critical condition she's dealing with, with her husband. To have to change her medical care, her health coverage, at this point, it, it could be a disaster for her. Every one of us in this room is one doctor's visit away from dealing with the catastrophic illness. I appeal to Mr. Matt to have a heart. I know you have political obligations, I get that, but have a heart. Sometimes in this political arena, you have to do things that you don't want to do, but you need to do for right now, and that's all I'm appealing to the mayor-elect for. I know that members of the council were supportive, and I thank you for that. I thank you for having a heart. And I hope that our mayor-elect can put on this particular situation, political maneuvers aside, and deal with the human element. We're told. We're talking about somebody who does not need a break in coverage, who needs to maintain the health coverage that he has. And we're talking about someone who's done a terrific job for the past twelve years in representing our residents. So I'm appealing to you again, I'm thanking the council for what you've done. I'm appealing to Mr. Matt on the basis of maybe the memory of a friendship, to consider doing the right thing. Because you know what? When it's all said and done, when we all leave our little political offices, God only knows what help we will need from somebody. And we just all need to have a heart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian C. Loria, L-R-I-O. I actually reside at one eighty eight, apartment number forty five, Montclair, New Jersey. But before people begin to ask, you know, quote unquote, outside or speaking, I'm here to speak on behalf, as of two previous speakers, of Joyce Briggs and requesting that Mayor Matt consider her as the public defender for upcoming term. And I say this, we've heard people speak on a personal level. We've heard people speak on a broader level. I guess I'm speaking as a person who actually works within the community here, within Plainfield for the last eight years, working with law firms in South Plainfield, living in North Plainfield, and yes, currently employed here in Plainfield, New Jersey. I think that this upcoming administration should really consider Ms. Briggs on a couple of different levels. Number one, Ms. Briggs has been a mentor for me, somebody who had a practice here in New Jersey, teaching me not only how to practice law, but also the business of law, which I think is very important for the betterment of Plainfield and future of Plainfield. They're only of the one Plainfield mantra that was used in a previous election. And I think that to, to influence small businesses and to influence others who will kind of move to Plainfield or react to Plainfield is quite important. And as a public defender, to go above and beyond to do that for upcoming term is, I think is tremendous. But also, I think, to consider Ms. Briggs for public defender because when you think of the actual role a public defender plays, tends to be extremely vital. She's a resident of the community. And as a public defender, I think it's very important when you consider an ever-changing demographic here in Plainfield, whether it be a police force or workforce herself, you need to have someone that actually represents the people who live here in the community. As Ms. Briggs has lived here for a great number of years, she has great connections with the community, and she knows the community. And so when people go to, when people have to be represented by a public defender, they entrust with her knowledge, her skill, and also her personality. When you bring another public defender who may not be familiar with the community, who may not know the people, who people may not trust, that can have some serious ramifications, not only for how citizens here in the community react to other figures, but how they see themselves. And so I think that for Mayor-elect Matt, I would strongly recommend that you reconsider Ms. Briggs for public defender. I would ask the council to consider, as I said, she's held over these many years, what she's done for the community, a person that only lives here, works here, but takes an active part of the community. There are various people in various positions throughout the state of New Jersey right now who essentially move, come to a town purely for work purposes and then leave the town. They don't leave a lasting impact. What they have in Ms. Briggs as public defender, a person who works with people who might be in unfortunate situations, actually walking the streets, actually going to the businesses, taking part in businesses, to be an active member of the community, I think goes a long way towards her as not only an individual, as an attorney, but also representative of this great town. And so again, Mr. or Mayor-elect Matt, please strongly consider Ms. Briggs for public defender position and also council, I think would do a very fine job in reconsidering her position also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? See you in a minute.
My name is John Campbell. First of all, congratulations to Mr. Matt, mayor-elect, and to Mr. Matt, president. This is Ms. Briggs on your reelection victory. Matter of fact, this is the first time I've been to council meeting since I figured a lot of wheels and dealings going on and negotiating. And I expect to see another line on that, on the agenda for a lobbyist, a local lobbyist.
Yeah, your address, sir.
I'm sorry.
Your address.
I reside at fourteen oh four Highland Avenue, Plainfield. I'm here for the same reason that my wife is here. You know, she may even appeal to resurrect her sister's home to the, as the public defender for this fine city. Now, the young lady talked about this being a political environment. You know, you've got several layers of politics. You've got real politics, and you can take them down to snake pit politics. And that's where we really don't want to go. Now, Ms. Briggs, I understand, has been a public defender for twelve years. And a lot of people, including Mr. Matt, have both voted for her confirmation. And I would trust, if you didn't think she was doing a good job, you wouldn't just vote unless your party boss or somebody told you that's the way you should vote. Mr. Matt should understand better than any politician in New Jersey what it's like to be politically swept out of position that you're doing a good job in. Because it happened to him in Rosetta. When he was the CFO, I thought he was doing a good job. And most people thought he was doing a good job. And, you know, politics, I guess, brought him in, politics. Because remember, he suffered quite a long time before he was able to gain an employment. Ms. Briggs is one of eleven kids, grew up in the projects and tried to do the right thing. She went to college on fellowships, scholarships, loans, and whatever else, other means necessary to do it. So she, she graduated from law school, so did her husband. Now, while they were taking their L sacks, I was down with Mr. Reed in South Carolina using a cotton sack. So I beg this council and the mayor-elect to do the right thing. Ms. Briggs has done the right thing. She, she raised her family here, she practiced law here, she pays taxes here, and she deserves a better treatment. Now, I apologize if I'm putting too much personal information on the table, but her husband has cancer. Now, I'm a victim of a catastrophic illness, and you certainly don't need to be mistreated and take your focus off of getting well at a time like this, when you have, when your husband suffers a, and they have three babies. So I don't really know how someone could put politics over a man that may be meeting his faith and three little kids that need the health care that the mother receives, and she's always paved her way. I mean, she, and, and, and at this point, she represents the downtrodden. You know, she, she could, she could opt to be a prosecutor, she could do some other things. But she opted to burn her tablet here and help the least. And I'm asking the best, Plainfield's fathers and mothers and the mayor to do the right thing. And, I mean, this, she's not looking for a life sentence in this position. She's just looking for an appointment where she can maintain her health insurance and provide a job that she's been doing for.
Now, I can have a motion to extend, two minutes. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extension, motion carries.
Thank you very much. You're such a professional, Madam President. Really appreciate it. And I ask you to please do the right thing. And I think this represents a big person. I mean, you may have made some commitments there, but it's a wise man that changes his mind in the midst of catastrophic things that happen. And, you know, just because you feeling good today, you might be just a little chest pain away from a catastrophic illness. So I ask you again to do the right thing. And it's not necessary to appoint somebody else. At least give her another year. I think this appointment is renewable yearly annually. And I ask you to give Ms. Briggs what she deserved and what I would ask of any person. And I think it's the right thing to do. And I think, and I, I think this is what Jesus would do if he was in your position. Thank you very much.
Again, John Campbell, fourteen oh four Highland Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. The council, Madam President, Mr. Chairman, Mayor-elect Matt. I'll be brief because I'm probably the last person standing between everyone and Hugo's or Bilati's or whoever else that, you guys that, these guys that have been meeting. I just want to go on record for my aunt Joyce Briggs. Definitely a role model in my life and a role model in a number of the lives of a number of the youths, the youth here in town through her involvement with the baseball organization. Many of you know she's, she's done that. She's sponsored basketball, she's, you know, been involved with the Donald Van Lake tennis. Definitely a fixture in the Plainfield community. I think when you have great individuals who are paving the way and doing good things in town, you know, Plainfield, as Plainfielders, we need to really focus on retaining the talent that we have here instead of losing them to the Montclairs and the West Orange. The West Orange is, you know, a gentleman here from, who's loved to have lived here in Plainfield. He's in Montclair. You know, I think we do look at retaining that talent. My aunt Joyce Briggs epitomizes that. She's a very competent individual who has worked tirelessly for the residents of Plainfield. I remember when I was younger, I used to, you know, my aunt's a lawyer, and public defenders don't make anything. And I'd say, why do you, why would she do that? Why, I'm sure, why do you want to do that? And, you know, when I was younger. But over time, I've come to understand that it's a very important role. And it's a selfish job, but she does it, and she does it well. So, you know, I definitely appeal to the council and to the mayor-elect to strongly reconsider reappointing my aunt Joyce Briggs for another term, at least a year. You know, as my parents said, and the other lady mentioned, and Mr. Loria, you know, we all go through tough times. You know, I'm sure everyone in this room has dealt with, with cancer, if not directly indirectly, a friend or a family member. And it's not a fun thing. You know, so again, I ask you reconsider. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ellen Cartwright with fourteen thirty, Fifth and State, Plainfield, New Jersey. Council and mayor-elect, you've heard more than you needed to hear about her today. Joyce Briggs is my baby sister. If any of you in here understand what it is to have a human heart and a heart of concern and compassion, that's what we may need to consider for having her stay as she does the job and does the job well. It's ironic that church and state, it has such a division. And there's no way that this government should ever function without a God, without a purpose. And I believe that, because I serve a powerful God, a mighty God, that you can be touched by His divine spirit to make a decision for a woman like anybody in this room could need. I'm not a political person. I don't think much of trying to get any concern about being involved in any rank. But I do respect all of you who have that position because it takes a lot. But I ask you to take the time to consider Joyce Briggs, who is a wonderful individual. And as you have already realized, I'm certain that you don't always want to be having the right people in office. And you grow by accepting change. And sometimes you have to make a decision that touches your heart, even if you don't always please somebody else. So I ask you to consider Joyce Briggs for this position. And as John said, it isn't a lifetime commitment. But it is a matter of having a human, sensitive, purposeful heart for a person who's in need and who's qualified and who can do the job. I thank you.
Is there any more privilege on the floor? See you in a minute.
I make a motion that calls the public hearing motion.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension, motion carries.
I make a motion that we know this is a special council meeting and we serve a wine, it's a wonderful twenty fourteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension, motion carries.